Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Winter Planning Board. And we're going to call the meeting to order at 7:05. And I'm Robert Carroll, and the Chair of the Board. And we have two matters in front of us tonight. One is a continuation of a public hearing on the subdivision of 40 R Bank Street. That's probably what everyone is interested in. And then we are going to review some meeting minutes and get those up on our website, and then discuss some support that we need from MAPC and here. So if it pleases the Board, I'd like to start with the public hearing on 40 R Bank Street. Would you like to come on up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I was...
Yep, all right. So yeah, I have to reopen. So first off, I'm going to be really rusty because I'm not used to talking to actual people. I'm used to looking at screens. So forgive me for a second. So we also do not have Denise, who is usually the person that is helping orchestrate the meeting. So we're going to be a little... But we're going to... We'll open the meeting. We'll do a quick roll call of who's here, but I already took that attendance, but we can see who's here. And then we'll reopen the public hearing in the subdivision of 40 R. So let's just do a quick roll call. Robert Carroll, yes. Chris Vois.
Sorry, Jane Horns.
Steve Peddell.
Great. And so Honor Merceret, Julia Waller is not in attendance. So we'd like to open the public hearing in the subdivision of 40 R Bank Street, which was continued from our last meeting this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Assistant Attorney Boy James Cipollino. We are on behalf of the petitioners, under Jason Calhoun, for a definitive subdivision at 40 R Bank Street. Chairman, I'd like to start by just setting out a little bit of procedural changes that have occurred in the last couple of hours. I'm not sure whether or not Denise was able to get the email out. However, we had submitted a definitive subdivision. That has not changed. It is still 15,560 feet. It's accessed by a deed of right-of-way in the rear room. Couple of things that are different from this plan that are important to note is the turnaround that's been created, that hammerhead turnaround for vehicular traffic, emergency vehicles, so removal of offenders with trucks so as not to disrupt the activity. The other is that there was proposed initially a duplex home on these 15,500... That was the one that was officially filed. We had talked about two one-family houses at first, and when we filed the latest, almost latest, plan, it was the duplex so as to minimize some of the concerns that were voiced during the original discussion. That was not an actual public hearing. So while we were doing our last-minute crap hearing tonight, we noticed that since we'd gone back to site plan review, the Site Plan Review Committee, which is made up of all of the department units in the town, as well as the manager, they issued a report, and it was dated sometime in May. It was a supplemental or superseding Site Plan Review Committee report. They were far on with respect to a lot of detail mentioned in the report except... And we picked it up. We want you to know about it. There is a dimension, and although this is not a zoning hearing, it does play out further on down the line, and I know that there were some complaints that were voiced with respect to what can you actually do on that lot? And why do you want to do anything? What we did find out is that when the Site Plan Review Committee issued its report, we went over all of the dimensional regulations. They were all called out correctly except the lot width for a true family house would have been... Duplex is 100 feet, 100 feet of frontage and 100 feet of depth. Well, this lot as proposed has the 127.8 or thereabouts linear feet of frontage on a private way. It does not, however, have 100 feet of side width. So we called that out as an oversight in the Site Plan Review Committee report. It has... It does not have any real repercussions with respect to whether or not the subdivision, the definitive subdivision is worthy in the territories of granting the three exceptions. But it does have some implications with respect to zoning. And what it does is it picks what can be built there as a matter of right. So in a last-minute scramble, Rick Salvo, Jason, and Glenn revised... It's not a different plan. It's half the plan of what we had submitted. We shrunk down the two-unit duplex to one family. That's all you can put there. So we didn't want to come here and argue that we could put duplex on a lot that would... That we're asking you to approve when we actually can't do it. So I said that, I know Denise had probably gone home by then, wanted to get that out on the email wire just in case she was able to bounce it. Rick Salvo does have the plans, same plan, rather than having a duplex, it's this wide single-family house that's... And that's all that's changed. Doesn't alter the number of exemptions that we're looking for. It doesn't alter anything from the plan that you may have seen yesterday with respect to the turnaround, the emergency access, the hammerhead that was installed, the wide private way for the access way. So I wanted the Board to know that. When we came away from the Site Plan Review Committee, all of the department heads had their input. That may have some relevance, has some relevance with regard to what we're looking for in terms of exemptions from my ordinance for dividing the subdivision. It has more probably far-reaching or further upon down road implications, but they all had their input. Fire Department had its input, so we... Police Department had their concerns, so we changed the plan. There were neighbors who had written letters and other people that Glenn and Jason had met with around the... So it's different from what you last saw when we did this meeting, first half of the public hearing by Zoom. And so that I don't get pulled into the weeds trying to explain all of the things that the civil engineer is tasked with planning. Mr. Chairman, I'd ask you for Rick Salvo, our engineer, to explain the layout and also the exemptions that we are seeking from the ordinance and why we are seeking them. And also to point out a couple of other things we've done on there with regard to infrastructure, fire hydrants, and so forth. And I think sort of off my pay grade, Mr. Chairman. So if Mr. Salvo may be allowed to, I would ask you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the Board for the record. My name is Rick Salvo, Engineering Alliance, Office at 194 Central Street in Saguas. As Attorney Subletta noted, this was the plan down here that was originally discussed at the first meeting that we had. This is the current proposed plan, which as you can see, you might recall, Bank Street is down here. There's an existing right-of-way that extends through number 40 banks. And then we're proposing a hammerhead-style turnaround in this area. And this hammerhead-style turnaround meets a lot more of the subdivision rules and regulations criteria than the roadway with easement associated with it. And a couple of those, I think, created a 20-foot wide way. This meets the 50-foot criteria. The amount of waivers went from five waivers down to three waivers. Three waivers, excuse me, are, number one, the roundings. Usually when two streets intersect, there's roundings at the corners so that the curb radius can be accommodated. It's sort of antiquated regulations. Most municipalities have that rounding requirement in their subdivision rules and regulations. I don't think I've ever seen a municipality that didn't have it. But the configuration of this right-of-way is heading straight into the lot. We really don't need the roundings, and that's why we've requested relief from that. The second is all dead ends are required to have a cul-de-sac turnaround with a minimum 120-foot diameter. Like I said, and I think it got a little confusing at the last hearing, this is a road. There's no question that's a roadway. It's providing frontage for this lot, but it's only going to provide frontage for this lot. It will only ever provide frontage for this lot. So it really doesn't have the need for 120-foot diameter area for vehicles to turn around. This hammerhead-style turnaround is inadequate. I agree. I agree. Supported that type of turnaround. And the last was sidewalks. Given the fact that this is only going to service one single-family house now, you know, most people walk down their driveway to get to a street. They don't walk down a sidewalk driveway. And that would be the same case scenario here. So if you compare the two plans, you know, and keep in mind, you know, the subdivision procedure really is just to approve this way which provides frontage for this lot. It doesn't necessarily approve the development of the lot. The development of the lot, actually in this case, the majority of the development will be within the 100-year floodplain, so it's going to require another public hearing through the Conservation Commission. So this is a very unique case in that the footprint of the house will fall with a public hearing process and be determined by a governing authority. But typically subdivisions don't approve what happens on the lot. That's what zoning is in place for. By changing this configuration, just to kind of give an idea, you know, we get a lot more green space all around the lot, and we now have the ability to leave almost 50% of the lot itself, 15,000-square-foot lot that's created outside of the right-of-way, about 7,500 of it can stay completely natural and keep all those trees, not have any impact on any of that floodplain. You know, we did hear loud and clear, and I think it's kind of obvious when you look at the two side by side that this plan, I think a lot of the Board members considered an overdevelopment of the property. And I think the word irresponsible was used, and I think that this is a much more responsible development, you know, that certainly doesn't overpower the area. To give you an idea of what it would look like, you know, the street, here's the 40 Banks house, here's Bank Street, here's the right-of-way. You can see now, you know, we're really not impacting as many backyards of folks. It's development up close. There was also a request from the Fire Department that we bring a fire main up here and put a fire hydrant back here, and that this house be sprinkled as well. So the house would be...
Can you point out the fire hydrant again? Sorry, I was typing.
I have a question. That shows a duplex. You're talking about a single-family?
Yeah. Well, the only reason why it shows duplex is...
Just because of the whole plan?
Yeah, that's the plan that was...
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah. So, you know, just to reiterate what Attorney Subletta said, it's the configuration of the lot. And let me go back to the sheet because I think it articulates it the best. This becomes our frontage for this lot, about 128 linear feet. This is the lot width. This is the lot depth. There's plenty of depth on this property. But in order for this to be a duplex, you need three things. We need 10,000 square feet of area. We've got 15,000 square feet of area. You need 100 feet of frontage. We've got 128 feet of frontage. But you have to have 100 feet of lot width. This lot is only 75 feet wide, so the width just simply isn't there. So by zoning, it couldn't be a duplex. It would have to be... It would have to be a single-family. I know we said quite a long, you know, the planning board in this process really doesn't dictate what happens on the lot, but you kind of do in this case, right? Because if you approve this lot configuration, you're effectively approving a single-family house. You know, a duplex only wouldn't allow it.
Until you go for a zoning variance, it sounds like.
Well, I guess that...
Mr. Subletta said down, it affects, impacts it down.
That could happen, but I mean, let's face it. I mean, this lot hasn't been very successful at the zoning board of appeals in the past, and I think we've heard that message loud and clear. I think the reality is a single-family house lot. But you know, that opportunity is available to anyone to go do that. They've effectively created their own hardship there, but...
Any other questions?
I didn't mean to say we're going to go to the zoning. Because I meant that we would not be successful. That would affect anything that we would... I would be able to... I don't think we'd ever get...
No, no. The rights exist.
Yeah. Well, you know, every, in every instance, property owner has the right to... Appeals, whether or not it's a fool's errand, we've seen a few of those. Generally, this is not one of those. And as Rick had said, what we're asking for is it to be... Effectively would be approved as a single-family.
Yeah, that's why I haven't said wrong, is that the zoning table on it says single-family zoning. It lists all the criteria. There's no missing a word, you know? Because in my opinion, it would be a contradiction if the planning board were to endorse a plan that said duplex, but the zoning criteria was on there for a single-family, even though you're not making any determinations relative to zoning. It just...
Any other questions for the civil engineer?
So the frontage is grabbing all radiuses. Parallel drive access is considered frontage?
Correct.
So the hammerhead benefits you with the frontage?
Right. Yeah. It creates a turnaround and it creates the frontage.
So I just want to, before we go, I want to go to public comment next, but I think I just need to... I'm absorbing a lot here. There's a lot of changes that happened since the last time we met. And we're going to talk about whether there are changes in the right direction. I think generally trending in the right direction. The issue, though, is the, even the documents that we were sent as late on Thursday differ from the things that were here, as far as I understand. So we saw duplex. We saw two-family.
Correct.
So all our, at least I can speak for myself and the Board, all our homework was trying to understand what you sent us on Thursday and how that relates to the meeting that we're having right now. So we're, we've been asked again to sort of translate that from, don't look at the, it's not two single families, it's one duplex. Oh, it's not one duplex, it's just one single family. So there's a lot of moving parts here. And so again, I think trending in a sort of, in a way that I think is easier to understand, but there's still a lot of pieces in terms of whether the frontage counts and whether the private road is a street and all of that. So I kind of want to, I want to understand some of that. I want to give people time to comment. But I just think, just the fact that we're in this room for the first time in a year and a half is probably cause enough that I feel pretty strongly that we should continue this matter because there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues that have just changed since Thursday, let alone last month.
That's fine.
Okay?
Yeah, I'm sorry you were getting things sort of by the installment. As we were getting them, we were forwarding to you, not the lease of which was the Site Plan Review Committee report. That's actually, we were looking at that at the last... We wanted to call that out on our side. And hey, we have no problem in doing it. If there's going to be additional information that would be... We'd be happy to send it along and nod at 5 o'clock on the night of the hearing. But sometimes timing is not on our side.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that because I think, I just don't want to be seen as pulling a fast one on folks. We were told that this would be a hybrid hearing. We're ready to have a hybrid hearing. You can see some of my members were ready to have a hybrid hearing and are not even here. And so there's just a lot of difficulties with this kind of back to normal. And again, want to make sure people are keeping up, not alone, not just me and the members of our Board, but the members of the public, okay?
So it was interesting as we did a conference call with this new Barrett and I said that... I had, I sat on the other side of the table in municipal boards before, and I know that sometimes things come in and they're different, like a New York City subway shell gate. And I said, I don't want us to be perceived as that. But I wanted to send that on even though I knew that it was, it was going to be painful to do it at the last minute because it just didn't seem right.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. I want to talk about, you know, I don't want to talk about a sort of lost cause, straw man that's not going to go anywhere either, so let's not waste anyone's time. So I think that's great. But, you know, again, I appreciate you giving this time.
It does, it might be going here anyway, Bob, but it does feel Attorney Subletta like, just for the cleanliness of paperwork moving forward, that this should probably be a reapplication, not a continue... I mean, we're continuing a hearing of a totally different development proposal. Now it's, what we've seen, I haven't seen a single-family. I'm sure Denise probably sent it in the morning, but we've seen a duplex. Now it's changed to a single-family. The application from two single families with a roadway to one single family, at this point, I mean, I think just for a paper trail should be cleaner to reapply.
So I mean, you are the ones who call out the procedure, and whatever you say is going to be is what it's going to be. I don't necessarily think that we need to do a reapplication and a re-advertising because it says that you're all the way up, your application all the way up with leave of the Board until the time of the approval vote. If that's the pleasure of the Board, we do.
And I guess aside from filling out the two-pager and having that be more accurate, the bigger ask by doing that would be that you're sending mail out again to the neighbors about the new plan. That's the lift that we'd be asking. I just want to make sure that there's not some other trigger.
No, that's fine. We have the butter list. We have the notification that was in the change the date to have a re-advertising. Whatever the Board wants to do. I mean, nobody wants it to be, you know, a clean and streamlined process more than we do because I've seen people get hung up on the rocks at the end when they thought they were coming in to Port State and Sound, and it wasn't the case. I agree with...
So, well, I guess the question is, what's the will of the Board? Should we just take some public comment about this? A lot of folks came out here for the first meeting of 2021 of the planning board, and I'd like to hear their input, but I just wanted to clarify to you that, you know, we're seeing this new now too. So I'd just maybe take the temperature out of the room for the folks that say, I didn't know it was a single-family. It's okay. So let's just open up for public comment. And so for public comment, if you could just state your name, and if it's really complicated, help me spell it. And just the, you don't actually have to say your address, but you could at least let me know what your precinct is. That would be helpful.
Can we also request, anyone that speaks, if they could just say if they are direct butter or...
Sure, sure. That would be great. Everyone understands what direct-to-butter means, like on the sides of the, okay? Or directly across the street, essentially. Okay. Public comment. Who would like to go first?
Good afternoon, Chipper Sam Carroll, Attorney Nicholas Gomes, Representative Diane Spicer, Director of Butter. If you're ready, I could approach.
Yeah, please.
Submitted to the Board just earlier today, copy of my opposition paperwork. I have copies for you. And I should note that this was put together after receiving notice of posting last Thursday. With that limited notice, I tried to put this together for your review today. To hear that we are going to potentially continue the matter until we actually know what we're looking at without all the other interruptions, that'll be a good day. But I'm here to tell you that I don't think that is necessary, and based on the opposition file, this could be put to a vote and finally put to rest. As I stand before you today, as you may know from either reading my correspondence or reviewing the history of this case, the owners or owners of this property, two different owners over time, have sought to bring for development on this property, starting in You know that Mrs. Spicer was the second person to sign with her then-husband in opposition. That was voted down. And then again in 1990, similarly, coming forward and voted down.
I'm sorry, you're speaking to... You sit down.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. There's...
I'm just trying to set up my ITs and work.
That's okay.
And this is my first time before you...
That's okay, no worries.
You're welcome to have a seat if that's helpful, just, you know, whatever's comfortable. Usually people just say from the gallery, whatever works for you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. In 1990, when they again came before the development of this property, it was again Thereafter, moving forward into 2005, they attempted a third attempt. This decision, which was a denial, ended up being appealed. Superior Court Justice defined that the zoning board of appeals in this town was correct in making that deny. And he made specific findings that I would point you to, page two, starting with the note that Bank Street itself is a one-way narrow road going 22. He notes back then, in 2005, how there's an issue with cars parking on the street. Here we are in 2021. There's still a problem with cars parking on that street, if not even more, the traffic. And I will try to best summarize. We know it's a problem identified in the master plan that they want to have thorough and easy access for this town. The Fire Department Chief at the time, Hazlitt, that is what the judge hangs his hat on, that this chief is signaling that this is a problem. He finds his evidence that making those turning radiuses are critical. And he finds that fire captain credible and well-founded. And that is why he came to the conclusion that that access was inadequate and unsafe, and that the zoning board was consistent with the bylaws in making that decision. It didn't end in 2006 in the appeal of 2009, when the judge made his decision. It continued on and as recently as 2017, a mere few years ago. And in 2017, they were again denied. And I point you specifically to the language put forth by the Board Member Darren Baird that's applicable to today. And I don't know him. I don't know what he was sound in his reasoning that day. And he says, the petitioner, they keep coming back to the Board again and again, and we keep saying no. And they keep asking, you are wasting our time. And then it gets appealed to the Land Court, and you're wasting community resources on an appeal. And then he goes forward and says, essentially not wanting to be a part of the Board if that's going to happen, a potential lawsuit, but he stands there and says, I was on the Board in 2005, referencing that litigation I just mentioned. He was there, and he never, exact quote, I don't want to see this case again, ever. So he asked that someone should pick up the case file, really read it, and that we need no from his standpoint. That's it. That's an official, like, in 1998, I'm sorry, 1988, yes, in 1990, when the board said no. These issues are not changed, and if anything, we need to look at Winthrop as a whole. And that is why I specifically point out the development standards, that the master plan was created in the strategic, the strategic plan for economic development. The economic development plan clearly indicates you are proud of your ocean heritage in the community, in neighborhood. And that is why for the first standard, you have promoting the environmental resources. And I'll, because the electronics aren't working, I will point you to the particular map. The green arrow represents my client's house, and then you can see a measuring of 351 feet to the Belle Isle Marsh. Based on my limited research, this is a natural asset that is top criteria for your town's Second strategic factor, improving accessibility to, from, and within the town. This is a densely populated neighborhood on a narrow one-way street. This is not going to improve traffic, it's going to make it worse. Three, create strong towns to enter in waterfront commercial district. This is exactly what was incorporated into the master plan when it's saying, develop the town centers in the commercial district. See, I see the construction out there now, on my way in, and that's the roadmap to the developer. Build out the community center where the businesses are, the walking traffic, don't bring it to an outlier neighborhood in a densely populated block, and cause havoc for those neighbors who have consistently come out to fight this. And Mrs. Spicer's current husband is unable to be here today because of his medical conditions, and I'm here, and their funds are paying me to do this for them, and I hope this is as far as I must go. The specific plan, and I mention it here, is 200 Main Street. Let me pull it up and show you. Sorry, it's first. Sent to you the simple plan showing my client's property here in the corner, the red indicates the easement, and the green is the proposed development area. When you look at this map, down here on Main Street, 200 Main Street is the address. I searched all of Winthrop, and I'm looking at the development, and this block-style development that is behind my client's house, with the natural growth behind it, is consistent throughout. And I'm looking for examples where there's a house that could be inside with the bare ground, and there it is, right across the street practically, 200 Main Street. And why does it work for 200 Main Street? Because they've got plenty of frontage on Main Street, where it's easily accessible on and off, not causing issues. Now, I did see the report mention that the, some of these factors have been mitigated, and they are continuing to come before municipal boards, trying to make it work when the decisions have already been made, that it's not going to work, and it is a safety hazard. So to have these conflicting decisions is nothing but trouble for the town of Winthrop. And the conditions of this easement, taken by my client, is a water zone. When were these pictures taken, Ms. Spicer?
Um, 2016, 2017, after every rainstorm, after every significant rainstorm.
And if her husband was here, he would be here to testify to the amount of birds that are calling out every home, whether they're migrating or not. If you just give me one moment. So what this comes to me is, in contravention of your master plan, it's a proposal that is trying to make it work when it's already been decided many times by many boards, various generations of boards, who said, this is not good for Winthrop. So I ask respectfully, if not demand, you deny this petition on its face, based on the substantive merit. Looking specifically at the objectives of the planning board, it must be visually harmonious as viewed from within the property, outside of it. It must be designed in a safe, efficient, and aesthetically pleasing manner. So looking at all of these factors combined, this project cannot fit the mold. Inside of this neighborhood, it's all houses. Simply just sticking a building in the middle of it is going to have zero aesthetic value. Yes, it may be a buildable lot in the development, could make some money, but you can't put a price on it on what Winthrop is trying to do as a whole city, and that's have responsible development, responsible growth, take advantage of that coastal community. Swishing this lot inside of the Belle Isle Marsh area is simply not meeting that fact. Last, what I would touch upon for you, thank you very much for your time and allowing me to speak before you. We must assure that the dwelling unit being developed is compatible with the surrounding land uses, and that traffic and best services will not be adversely impacted. Here, I veer to the board tonight that there is going to be nothing but negative impact that comes from that development into the future. Here, it's adding to another neighbor, it's eliminating the 10, 15, 20 neighbors who call that backyard peace. I ask you to imagine yourself in their position, in their peace, and what the effect will be with adding a new neighbor, building that, we don't even know what it's going to look like, or exactly where it's going to be. And I ask you to consider that, from their perspective, but also from what you don't see, in that busy road, in that hazard, and I put it specifically in there, maybe it is not going to be a hazard, there may not be a fire, but in the one instance that it does occur, and the fire chief back in 1988, in 1990, and 2006 was correct, then I have concern, and I don't know what the size difference specifically are, because I haven't had an opportunity to study it in depth, but with those numbers, I think we're still going to have a problem. And if it wasn't what's going to work versus what's for the greater good, we wouldn't even be here today. I respectfully request you, let's deny this application, put it to rest, it's been decided over and over and over and over again. I thank you very much for your time.
Looking for public comment?
Public comment?
My name's Kevin Foley, I'm in the butter. That's my backyard, that's flooded. That's not even winter, that's springtime, that's just with an inch and a half of rainfall in this town. So they're going to put their hammerhead up against my fence. Where are they going to put the snow when it comes time to plow that stuff? They're going to melt it, put it down in their storm drain? By the looks of it, they're going to put the hydrant right in my corner. What happens when that fails, and it floods my basement? I'm not, I'm not part of this thing at all. We've opposed this from the start. I've been in this house since 1996. I'm tired of going through this with these people. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
My name's Nick Agri, live at 449 Main Street, I'm the butter, direct to butter.
A-G-R-E?
A-G-R-I. I oppose the development of this property for the following reasons. Very clear, property owners don't have the best interest of the community in mind. If so, they would have filed a preliminary plan. Sorry, a little nervous talking in front of a bunch of people for the first time.
We understand.
It's easier to sit down.
Yeah. You don't have the best interest of the community in mind, because they would have filed a preliminary plan, or they would have filed a preliminary on this project. This is a very unique piece of land, and it butts approximately 15 homes. Show me another place in Winthrop that does that. Two, three, four, maybe, if you have multiple, that does that. No time to developers try to contact their new neighbors, even going so far as to avoid sending up mandatory planning board meeting notice. You need to look no further than the plans to know that the developers do not have the public's best interest in mind. They're seeking to build a road, a mere 100-foot, to meet the 100-foot frontage requirements for the zoning board. To build this roadway, they're seeking three waivers, all three are for dimensional regulations for the building of a road. Not listed on their submission was a fourth waiver they would also need, which is for the width of a road. Code 16 dot 12 dot 0 dot, dot 010 dot A dot 2 states, the minimum width of a street rights of way shall be 40 feet. That road isn't 40 feet wide anywhere. Why? Why 40 feet wide? The hammerheads.
Okay, to me, I'm sorry.
Furthermore, there's no accommodations for on-street parking in their plans. Current plans, how to build a road, too narrow, does not have sidewalks, does not have the proper rounded corners, lacks a proper turnaround, does not have any public parking, hardly in the public's interest. Winthrop code of ordinances, 16 dot 04 dot 030 titled waivers from title provisions states, strict compliance with requirements. This title may be waived when, in the judgment of the board, such action is in the public's interest, and not inconsistent with subdivision control law. Waivers are away, of asking for permission to break the law, or warranted. Many board members may only grant waivers. If they start doing so, it would be in the public's interest. This is not the public's interest. In an earlier meeting, Chief Flanagan expressed his approval for this, stating that he had no issues when it came to fire safety, and getting the Winthrop Fire Department's vehicles into and out of the property. I respect Chief Flanagan, his opinions, many in kind of Winthrop Fire Department, however, I just, it didn't sit right with me, something was off. This reason, I went ahead and hired a draftsman to do a sweat plan analysis, sweat path analysis of that, of the turn from Bank Street onto this proposed private road, driveway, whatever you want to call it. Because I didn't have the Winthrop Fire Department's vehicles at the time, details to it, I had them go ahead and draft up a 30-foot box truck, which is a typical truck you would see delivering appliances, furniture to a new house. It couldn't make the turn. You guys like to see it? That's a 30-foot box truck turn, make a corner. Is it okay that I address them? Sorry, I should have asked you that. Just forget it. In all fairness, I should share this with everybody.
It was emailed to the board members, so we've seen the diagrams of trucks, and there's a few different options of box truck and fire truck.
In the meantime, I had them do that, I actually got the details for the Winthrop Fire Department's trucks, directly from the manufacturers, so I had them run that for, do the program also. And that vehicle could make a turn with an obstruction or without obstruction, obstruction being an average-sized vehicle, so 75 inches wide is the average-sized vehicle, parked perfectly up against the curb, parked occupied no matter what, would also have to jump the curb and wait to make the turn. So, with that in mind, approving the subdivision, we'll do a couple things. We'll set a precedent to take advantage of by future developers. I don't know if there's any other properties in Winthrop that are like this, but they could be taken advantage of. It will also open up the town and the board members for further legal action. You can approve, and it would place an undue burden on the community. For those reasons, along with all the others you're probably going to hear in that part, I urge you, planning board, to please vote no. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time to see the board.
My name is Nathan Buckholtz, I live at 44 Bank Street, which is a truck to butter to post. I am, if I could just, just sit down here. So, I am right here, so, just off the development. I am happier with what they did, though I'm still unhappy overall, and I think it's a complete eyesore. When I moved in 2010, before I purchased the property, I received an email from my real estate agent upon request to prove that the land was time-developed. I found correct value in a property behind our house in Winthrop that can't be developed because I, like my privacy, I don't want another neighbor hearing. That was a conscious decision when I purchased the house, and I'm stating that to just kind of indicate, I believe, that there would be a direct correlation to decreased values of properties surrounding this house. So that would actually be a detriment to the town, because the assessor values would be lower, and the town would be, there would be a camp of licensing taxes due to all the evaluations of the houses in this town.
I do want to state something very obvious here. I'm sorry, I forget your name.
My name's Rick.
Oh, sorry, sorry, yes.
Civil engineer.
Oh, yes. He did make a mistake, and he called it a driveway during his presentation, because I think we can call things for what they are. This is a driveway. The reason they are calling it a private drive is because it gets in the frontage. Everybody from throughout history who has tried to develop on this property called it a driveway, and it was denied due to lack of. So with the help of lawyers, they're able to present it, but they need to turn a driveway into a private road, and they need your guys' help. This is setting a new precedence for Winthrop. If this is allowed, it opens up the floodgates to other private roads being developed. I, I'll present this to the board in a moment, but Title 16 subdivisions in the code of ordinances was, this title shall be effective on and after the first day of February 1957. There may have been a date on there, February something, but that's easy to reference. I pulled a list of all private roads in Winthrop, Mass., which came from the town of Winthrop. The sites, the website in which I received it from, is on the bottom of this part of document, and I went through and on Zillow found the last, or found the date of any house being built on each private road. So with that, I realized there had been no private roads built in Winthrop since 1957. Good. Make sure I'm clear on these details. This is when the houses were built on the roads, and everybody knows a house cannot be built before the road is put in place. So, logical assumption would state that the roadways were actually older than the existing houses on the road, and every private road has a house that was built on it before 1957. So, I can present this. The reason I am taking that is because this is a precedence. Chief Flanagan at the last meeting said that, with hesitation, he, as I can hear in his voice, he said that Winthrop is approving this and that, and they're trying to think something, in so many words, I'm, you know, rephrasing, but he made it sound like Winthrop has already gone down this hill, and we need to go ahead and start building, because we did, but I forget the other development he referenced. But I'm here to state that this is a, setting a new precedence by constructing new private roads in the area, when Winthrop had not created any new private roads since the ordinance went into effect. And then lastly, I also wanted to hold this. Hold this? Please.
Hold it.
Okay. So, I have other reasons why they shouldn't be building it, which I'm sure if they had a competent lawyer, they should be able to find this information, so, and I'm guessing they may have already, and there's a reason they're not. I will do so.
Hi, my name is Julia Agri, I'm in Precinct 2, and I have personal public comment to make regarding any development that's in this area, building behind a bunch of houses, all these houses with children. My direct house, the direct to butter. My direct house, the direct abutter, my house is right here. So, you have turning into this road, wherever this is. Um, and then you have this area, which doesn't really look like a road, it looks like a driveway. But then you'll have another driveway, so you'll have people backing up directly into the property. So, what happens when there's an accident, somebody comes and smashes into my fence, it's back. There's no roads in this area, it's all the areas that bought their homes, bought it for this for a reason, for the privacy, for the safety of your children, to be able to let my kids play in my backyard without worrying about a car backing into the fence. There is no protection there, there is no sidewalk, there is nothing that is going to be a barrier besides coming into my yard. The other point I'd like to make is you said that there was going to be a fire hydrant, I believe, right around here, maybe back here. Um, and Diane Spicer's house, her house is here. Now, if there was a fire hydrant here, all these yards are going to be flooded. Right here, where it normally floods when it rains heavily, it does flood. Right here in this back corner, there's a lot of flood at baseline. Um, so if you're taking away all these streets, now you've put a greater burden on all these. So, it's people. Thank you.
More public comment.
I just, my name's Yoli, Y-O-L-E, last name is Marocco hyphen Lee. And I live at one Douglas Street and I am a butter. And I just want the board to know that we were not notified by mail that this happened. This is the first time we were not notified. And I also have utmost respect for, I'm an ER nurse, and when you call nine-one-one, you get, depending on how you adjust as well, you get the fire department for fire, most often you get police department and EMS. And recently, there was an article in the paper, there was a fire on Summit Ave, I believe, and Winthrop Fire Department was helped, gotten help from Revere and Masport, and they needed two ladder trucks. And I, I just can't see that happening here, that you would get all those vehicles in that spot, oh, whatever the emergency is. And I, I just don't see how all that can happen in there. And we did have a fire, um, on the corner of Morton last summer, Morton Banks, and it was fifty banks. And there were, uh, two other, Chelsea, I think, fire responded as well, and Revere and Winthrop. And the fire in the police department was there because the whole street came out to look. Tons of young children came out to look, they were very good with helping with that. And they talked to the neighbors about the toxic fumes coming from the smoke that we should clear up for a little while. And also EMS was there. So, I, I just don't understand how all that could happen. Maybe nothing will ever happen, but you don't know that. And I've seen, I've been working as a nurse for a lot, a lot of years, and I've seen things that shouldn't happen that happen. So, I oppose this.
Further public comment?
Uh, just one more thing, Kevin Foley again. Um, anyone here from Townhausen? You are from Townhausen. Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, woman, how's it going?
Very good, thank you.
Can I make one more comment? Um, so, um, like Yoli was saying, there was a fire at fifty-five Bank Street and that would be. So, right about here, right before you turn into here, right this, this long curve on, on, um, Bank Street, right before you go up, that's where that fire was, widest part of the road, Winthrop Fire Department wasn't even a truck there. Um, great. So, Winthrop Fire Department wasn't the first truck there, I believe it was Chelsea and then Revere and then Winthrop. It was windy, um, smoke and ash were falling on our house, as well as, uh, this house, this house, this house. They had to water down this house, um, and all the, all the smoke blanketed the neighborhood. It would be evacuated from our house as well as our neighbors. So, I imagine if something is back here, you're going to get all these homes and you're going to affect a lot more homes. Um, are you going to be able to fight fire from both sides of the street? When it catches opposite sides of the street, there happens to be a spread. What happens if more homes than just one on both sides are going to be affected?
Okay, last, last one.
I, I just have one, one more observation to make. On a single-family diagram down below there, um, it's all nice and sculptured in the, in the front and in the immediate backyard and the intended plan is to leave the rest of the property raw and wild. Uh, my question is, God forbid, there's a lightning strike up in the higher part of that property, how do you get responding engines to the property? How do you do that? Do you drive through their garage and open the back door? I don't know. What do you do in that case? Where's the hydrant? How are you going to run a line up a hundred feet? These guys going to carry a four-inch line, charged, two-hundred-and-seventy yards up the hill to a forest fire from a lightning strike? That's all, thank you.
Right here, I have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have a few comments today, Glenda Calla, I'm pre-sen six, these are my children, they own the property. Just want people not to lose sight that this is a privately-owned piece of property. It is not town property, it is not conservation land, not part of Belle Isle Mosh. There are all homes all around it, there are homes in front of it that are even closer to Belle Isle Mosh. So, using that as, I don't know, some kind of a detriment, I don't know how they got there. I agree with everyone's comments, I think everybody has valid reasons for feeling the way they do. No one wants to see a fire, no one. I have grandchildren, I have children, I would never want to see that. But I can tell you that a new home that goes into this property is probably better equipped and safer than any of the homes around it. It will have sprinkler systems, it will have all, everything, brand-new wiring, brand-new everything. So, that's one thing. I think seeing a brand-new home in this jungle that everybody seems to say is like raw jungle, whatever, um, I think it would be nice to have a brand-new home, uh, with some nice landscaping around it. I think it would add value to the community, I think it would make the other properties worth more and still leave a nice row of trees wherever needed, okay? Um, uh, let's see. And also, just so that everyone knows, just because your house butts it, not your backyard, it doesn't belong to you. It belongs to somebody else that pays the taxes on that property, just like you have your backyard. That, somebody else can't say, well, that's my backyard because it's, it butts their backyard. So, it's private property, it's not anyone's backyard. It's almost twenty thousand square feet of land, more than ample amount of space there to get a vehicle in and out. It isn't going to clog up any traffic on Bank Street, let's face it. We're putting all these units in Winthrop Center with no parking. This is like one family. So, if somebody next door has two or three children that become of an age where they get their own car, you're going to have their cars on the streets. You're going to say, oh, there's too many cars, you can't have the cars. I mean, Winthrop has changed their development, you know, they've moved forward, they've tried to relax some things so that people can develop and make it look good. I mean, I think that there's a lot of criticism in that, in the back there, people that have said a lot of things, it's, it's, people throw stuff at you, there's trash, there's this, it could be rotten and fessit, I have no idea because I've never walked it. But to me, what they are planning to do would make sense, I think it would add value to the, to the neighborhood. And just as, nothing against Diane Spicer, but when she bought her property, she bought it knowing that that was a right-of-way for whoever owned the land inside to be able to get to it, to develop it in the future. And this is how she bought it and it's in her deed. So, she does know that and everybody around there knew that. And for you to say that you bought your house and a rail to send to you, no one could ever build on it, to me, that was a leap of faith. I don't know if anybody could say that, okay? So, that's all I want to say is just please, keep an open mind. No one's trying to put a big giant development in there, you make it sound like they want to put thirty units in there. Just, just a house, shh.
Everyone gets a chance to speak and we need to respect the other people when they're speaking.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, I just said, please, keep an open mind and think about it, no one's trying to take advantage of anyone, no one's trying to hurt anyone, not, no one's trying to make anyone unsafe. That is not happening anyway, thank you.
Who's first, that was a huge bird.
Hi, um, my name's Allison, I'm a direct abutter, I'm at fifty-eight Banks. We just moved in, in November we bought, um, so we're new neighbors, we also, we found out that what was happening right next, a street right out my dining room window. Um, I guess my main thing here is flooding. Uh, we already have a sump pump, as I'm sure most of the neighbors do, there's already water issues and I think, sorry, I forget your name, um, but you showed that image of what that lot looks like after some rain. So, my real concern is removal of trees, which I know was touched upon, um, and how that's going to affect yeah, water getting into all the neighbors' yards, because of any water. So, just flooding and all that.
I just wanted to address the fact that I am Diane Spicer. I did buy that house and I closed on August sixth, nineteen eighty-five. And nobody was in the room with me when I bought that house, with Mr. Pellegrini as the former owner and his son after him, that tried to build for the last thirty-six years and were denied. Let's not forget, they were denied for a reason. What I want to say is that nobody was there and heard how he pitched the land and why he wanted the easement. First, he wanted just a few yards, then he went back and he bickered with his lawyer Falvo that he wanted a few more yards. They really didn't know how much they needed and they told us that was only access to take care of the property behind us. I was a young girl and I had a young husband and I wanted to start my young family and all I wanted to do was believe him because he said, I just want access to my land back there. Meanwhile, he owned Douglas Street, where one of the people in this group lives now. He had access to the land. He sold Douglas, his direct access to it, he sold me my house, which was direct access to it, and he landlocked himself, literally shooting himself in the foot. Now, nobody was there, only me, my husband, Falvo, Pellegrini, and I know what went down that day. I know how we were misled. I'm sorry that I was young and didn't realize that he lied. Three years later, he tried to build, couple of more years later, more years later, he tried to build again, and then again, and again. It's been brutal, nothing but brutal, and the proof is in the pudding. They've been denied every single time, they've gone to appeals, they've gone to land court. It just wasn't enough footage that he tried to take from me. Took twenty-nine, it wasn't enough. Ms. Calla sent me a letter offering that she had two very interested buyers to buy my home. I bought that about last spring and I asked someone to call on my behalf to see what he really wanted. She said, oh, yeah, we have two interested buyers, they won't have any type of, uh, building inspection, they'll waive it, they're just very interested in buying your property. So, I had someone call and she said, I'll let, I'll call you back and I'll let you know when these two interested buyers will walk through. Nothing ever happened again, very nett. Maybe they wanted to do it the right way and buy my home, which is the only legal frontage to that property. But instead, they decided to do it the back doorway and get their sons to ask their brother, who's the director of public works, to grant them a curb cut. No abutters were told, just one day we saw chalk marks, the neighbor said, what do you think that's all about? I said, I have no idea, no letters to the abutters, nothing. And then shortly after that, they cut the curbs adjacent to the easement on the left and the right. How does that happen during COVID, when the offices are closed to the public, when most business is only trivial, not that important, yet when somebody has a little power and their brothers say, hey, cut the curb? They cut the curb. Pellegrini was unable to do that, but they cut the curb. I'd like to see that reversed, they started off on the wrong foot anyway. They wanted to buy my house, they wanted the right frontage, they didn't, they didn't go that route, the legal route. Then they just cut the curb on their own. I'm sorry, I'm passionate about it, I've lived it since nineteen eighty-five. I respectfully, like, have to stop talking because I don't want you to think that I'm disrespectful, I don't mean any harm to anybody. But this has caused a lot of harm and grief to my family, my neighbors, and everybody else. And the ramifications of, of what they are, there's ramifications to this. Thank you, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Diana Bians, uh, just a couple of quick comments. Um, for removing trees, obviously, I would hope that there's been some environmental studies done in terms of what happens to the landowners down there and to our, to our town, to our property, to our environment. Um, also, just on a personal note, it really saddens me to hear that all these people have dug into their pockets and had to pay a lawyer and a surveyor and all these people to fight something that's clearly been shot down several times in court and now it's back here and you heard someone else say, I'm so sick of being here, these people are urging dinner and their families. I mean, it's eight oh eight, I'm sure my kids are getting ready for bed right now, here to fight this again. And I just, I hope that in the future, this body does some due diligence and some backtracking in terms of what's already been discussed and debated on so that people don't have to come back again fight for their value and their property to, to, to.
Just for the minutes, uh, pre-sen?
God, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm the worst.
Sixty-one reads. Just to close up, I, I won't say anything after this, but, um, first of all, I just, I did want to acknowledge that I did send a letter to Diane Spicer and, you know, we couldn't get a date to go in because she was busy that particular date. And to be honest, I was supposedly going to get a call back, somebody was going to schedule a time for a walkthrough. So, that didn't happen, but regardless of whether that happened or not, yes, I did send her a letter. And that would have been a nice viable thing to buy that property, that way they, they do have their frontage and she wouldn't have had to have done anything if she was in the market to sell. So, that's, that's just marketing that we do. And, um, sorry, what this other woman just said.
Me?
Yeah. What did you just say, just a second ago?
The trees, don't cut down the trees if you haven't done an environmental study.
Oh, so, I mean, I really don't know, um, if anyone who wants to cut a tree down on their land needs to get an environmental study. I, I don't know, this is not environmental property, it's privately-owned property. So, I'm just really not sure why everybody kind of is trying to put it through environmental. It's private property, you know, it's, it's just private property. You know, they just want to try to work something out with the neighbors and, um, you know, I would be happy to talk to anyone, to meet with them if they like, other than just trying to throw out there all these accusations. And the only last thing I want to say is that everything that was brought up about who was being denied, that was being denied, that was a totally different owner who had a totally different project or request or development or whatever it was. It was nothing like what these two are trying to do, my two sons, they're just trying to put one house, or it was a duplex, or one house. And I, I don't know what the other people wanted to do, but everyone seems to, they call it a development, it's just building single-family homes and it could happen anywhere and you don't own the land next to you that's. And it could happen anywhere. And you don't own the land next to you that's vacant or the air above you. I mean, people have a right to build on their property.
Just want to be careful. I don't want to go back and forth.
I just wanted to address the fact that I feel that Ms. Calla is putting words in my mouth. That's all. It's over. I'm done.
Okay, I understood that there's an issue, so that's fine, but we've been, I think the issue's been good. Civil and I've learned a lot more about text and deals about it from it, so I appreciate. Uh, any other public comment? I'm going to close. What is, I'm going to just put, uh, before this started, my thought.
I appreciate the comments. I think the same thing. I think a reapplication, notice to abutters, throw a single family home. We should do all due diligence. Provisions that, the subdivision.
More question. I gotta do a little more research. There's now a subdivision? Single-family house, all five as a subdivision? I gotta do, I was always looking at duplexes and two families as a subdivision.
One of the reasons.
There's one less subdivision. Is that, it's one, one less subdivision?
I think one of the reasons why I also support a new application, I understand and appreciate that it can be reviewed. But given how vocal the neighbors are and how long the history is with this piece of property, submitting a new application specifically what it is that you're asking for, I agree, is the cleanest way to go and helps us understand specifically what it is you're.
Chairman Lee, because my name has been mentioned several times. I'd just like to speak to the project team themselves. They said there was no private ways since.
I know, we, like, most of us know, but not everyone, so it's helpful.
So, uh, that there's been no private ways created. In the town meeting, they created button place, private. They created it and five years later, they came back to the town meeting, questioned the town. They put their own sewer system, sewage, stormwater, the whole thing. Their stormwater drains have started. So the people that bought on that private way were buttoned. Dishing the town and the town both. As far as houses being built down on the ocean side, down Point Shirley, Grand, all of those streets are a mess. They were all cottages, were never occupied. The oceanfront became the place to be. By right, they were able to build two and a half stories. So I have houses being built at two and a half stories by right. Can't get anything under special condition, something like that. You cannot throw a ladder between houses. You definitely got it straight up. The man I had probably more respect in my life, Paul, was his father, who retired in nineteen ninety as he was fighting forty kids. He turned this project. As you speak to Captain Hasler, he was the fire prevention. He spoke against it, but no fire prevention officer speaks against it last year. The only reason now, when the governor came out several years ago, and especially you folks who volunteered board, said we want to build five hundred thousand new units. That's when all hell. Whether you want to call it all hell broke loose or you don't want it, for the fire department's perspective, it is, we're on the losing end of those times. Right now, we have a case that they're building a house at one seventy-one, the Strand, that's a hundred and twenty-two feet off the street. We want the house sprinkled. This project here, when it was cut in half, put in a hydrant, and they're putting in a sprinkled building. Fire department doesn't pick what project that looks like. That doesn't look like. We can only do, we can express an opinion, but we can only do what the law allows us to do. Up in the Collins property up in Nahand Avenue, Muffintown, the Anderson family built a house out beyond the very last house on Nahand Avenue. You couldn't even, you wouldn't even find it if you didn't know where it was. And they didn't even create a private way. You drive down another person's driveway. But the code says, if you sprinkle a house in Massachusetts, you do not have to have a paved road within a hundred feet of it. Because we talked about ladder trucks getting down that street. Anything down the beach section from Beaton Street all the way up to Locust Street, we will always tell the ladder truck, danger on Shore Drive. We don't want the ladder truck any of those. Because we can't get off those streets onto Shirley Street through the park. So the projects have gone crazy. They just approved on, we get a string of Willow Terrace. A, a single-family, two and a half story wood frame house. The last little piece of greenery on that dead-end street. That house is being built behind the houses on Thornton Park. Everybody was outraged. And there was nothing that we could get in. So we had a gentleman who came to us. He said, put in a hydrant, put a sprinkle of building. There's nothing other than an opinion that fire department stand on. And again, that piece of land right now is an attractive nuisance. The rat problem in Winterford is far superior to the fire problem right now. Due to, you know, building codes and everything else. But you can call that an environmental piece of property. It's an attractive nuisance. For the fire department, it is. That, that piece of land gets going on one of these summer days that it's blowing forty miles an hour. It's an attractive nuisance to everybody because if you look in Revere, when they used to have the big tall weeds going out, you get on Lynn Marsh Road or, uh, coming back, you'll see that's all cut. Now it's maintained only because when it got going on the right day, they lost houses, they lost fences. We had the same problem in Revere Street, uh, where they built, the MDC built their park, the same thing. But again, this wasn't a case that, you know, the fire department doesn't care anymore. This project's been turned down a number of times. Is it being turned down? Again, we're not here to judge the project, the developer, who it is. We do it based on, are they meeting the needs, satisfy the N F? And that project was. My, my feeling is, you know, we're taking, you take next to the Beach Firehouse. That woman, Mrs. Lee, tried to make that house a two-family. The years, they never allowed to. Due to her, me, that became a shack. We sold that shack. The developer came in and built six units with the parking underneath the property. I mean, when we look at this, for the fire department, less impact than probably the majority of the building that's. So I don't want anybody to think I spent my entire life. I don't go away winters. I've been here for forty-three years. I'm retiring in the fall. But I don't want you to think I let God down that, let's build this, you know, and throw public safety. This project, as it has impact to the abutters, great. But from a fire perspective, I can't come here and say I'm rooting for all you abutters. I'm here how it affects mine. Almost every project right now, there's no, we called this town built out ten years ago. And the building that's going to go on in the next five years, you'd never think it could be achievable, the town that was built out. So from a fire perspective, as we see some development, we have to swallow it because funding is the biggest problem for our department, for the police department. And when we have a project that's palatable, we'll give it up, bless it. And from a public safety, we believe this is a palatable. With that, I thank you and I thank.
Any other on the board? So we, um, I think we're, our motion to continue? Yeah? So, or are we saying this is closed?
To close it, start a new one if needed.
Mr. Chairman, would it, would it be, I'm sorry, would it be easier if we asked leave to just withdraw the application? Prove it? Start with a brand new one and then you don't have to worry about what happened to this one?
Sounds, sounds good to me because I don't want to.
Just clean slate.
Reject that application.
No, I, I, yeah.
Adds to the timeline.
So, so we're hearing official means. Our original application presumably come back. Do have data that aligns.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we, we would ask you to withdraw it.
Can I say? All right, go ahead.
Touche. I saw that. Yeah. Go ahead.
Nope, finish it.
That's it. Period.
Oh, okay. Um, I just wanted to respectfully let the group know or the, the public that showed up today and took time out of their day, their evening, that regardless of whether it was withdrawn and a new application submitted, that we still heard your comments. It was still worth it for you. And so we thank you for doing all of this. Thank you.
Yeah, both sides. It was helpful. Great.
Close it.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're closed now. And again. Yeah, somebody make a motion, please?
Is it closed public comment?
Uh, no, I think we've, we've already closed public comment.
Or accept the withdrawal, I guess.
Motion for acceptance.
Okay. Chris, seconded by Gina. All right, so we have only four of us voting now, right? Okay, so Gina, accepting it, or we just do a sign of hands, right?
All in favor?
All in favor? Hi. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Like an old grant, and they're doing some new GIS stuff with us and that grant only cover what they're working on for that. But, uh, you know, I definitely have like contact with them now. They're already our host for them. I do have a quote from them, I think, whatever it sent out. It was more like an hourly rate, but all the hour, hourly rates were very similar on the three quotes that I got and like, grand numbers. It was again, like, probably. But I mean, I could probably, now that I have a contact. My number, but I'm not sure on, in terms of procurement, where the cutoff is. I know, like, I don't know if it's the same for our town. Previous towns have spent like ten thousand. If it's under ten thousand, we don't have to go out to bid. I don't think this is a thousand, but I think I'd have to check with.
We should just keep following up.
Yeah, I just, you know, if there's anything I can do to help. Yeah, I think you've done. Yeah, I just don't want it to be another one of those good ideas that just goes to somebody's desk and ends, you know?
I'm just talking, soon in CBD, hopefully we see some growth. You know, and it's like, if someone has a property dispute, we've asked that forever and we could have something come before us, you know, next time. Still don't have a map. Like, we haven't. So, at least, at least to hide that. Probably spending more money with every little individual parcel.
Exactly.
Try to get it done than if they just did it all together.
That's great. Then the other thing that I thought we could get some framework and some guidance from M A P C was about just sort of design standards. So like, you kind of set the table of what some of those are and we don't have to, you know, we can decide how deep and how, I guess the word, picky would, we want to get or how granular we want to get with it. But right now, there's kind of no design standards. There's a couple of things that say you have some percentage of glass. But most of that is just central district.
We should do that sooner than later also.
Because that, again, it's like, it's going to make people feel comfortable where, where say, yeah, there's going to be a development next to your house, but at least it's going to be controlled to looking nice. Right now, it's all just, please make it look nice. It's us begging them. Uh, because there's no real kind of stick. So I, I think that would be good. And honestly, between the use table, the definitions, that probably enough. And because we're, we're taking it parallel with other stuff that shows up. That sound, sound good? Okay, so I'll write a little list.
Yeah, it's basically every meeting that you have with a developer coming in. Like the, the map, every single time someone comes in is, is the zoning map.
Yeah, there's some.
Use some design standards, be annoyed with what the building's going to look like and you go through. That doesn't help the developer because he's got to go through four or five different iterations of plans. And, and that wastes three, four, five months and just. Gave them something to tell you, this is how we want footprint to look. Cut months off.
I would have been the whole Muffet House. What was that, Muffet?
Oh my God, Muffintown.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it was like.
That's where they come back.
It took us that long to figure out it was a business and not residential. It took us like two meetings.
Yeah.
Because he didn't know either, or the applicant didn't.
No, it's like you said, we end up learning a lot from the people that are abutters. We learned a lot from the woman in that red house right behind us. The white friend.
Lot of history there, yeah.
She was very helpful.
We really spent a lot of money.
Yeah, which is, is hard to swallow when some, when that many citizens have to engage council, have to engage surveyors and all of that, just, just to feel heard.
Yeah, that's how that they went with something that was never going to happen. Because it was basically, there's so many denials. They're now, oh, it's just a single-family house. And causing everyone all this grief.
Question about. I'm a freshman, but, um, in, in terms of like environmental impact reports and it seemed like there's a lot of momentum behind that in Winterford, is that something that we could also, or like?
Would they give advice on resiliency or environment?
So we had those folks come in, maybe a couple of years ago. They had a, a sort of a resiliency checklist that they were going to make it, but it seemed like it was like voluntary. Wasn't rules, but we could adopt them.
Still helpful. Although with this property, I think it's important what lit miss Alice. It's private property. So that's something we also have to make sure you're on. What point, and, and there's, you know, marsh houses, street houses, property, you know what I mean? So like, at what point does that come into play or not? We need to be really clear on that.
What do we see in the sense it's in the hundred-year fund base? Concom. Would Concom write us a letter?
Yeah, they've been.
Because we could approve a road and then Concom. Well, they'd have an order condition. Only with the Concom would they, they built into the, I think what we would. Approval.
It does make you wonder though, if there was development, if proof flooding.
It definitely will. Yeah, you show these photos and it's all.
Actually make it better for the neighbors.
The way the grading is, it grades right into that. It's like a fishbowl there. Bring the grade up, it's sloping down the street and it goes.
So maybe there could be some design guidelines as you're looking into that.
Yeah, I think there should be a sustainability piece or a sort of. Five or eleven or whatever.
I think, I think, yeah, but I would, and I know others would disagree. So no offense to Diane, who's both agrees, you know. I think that this town, if we're going to. That's where most.
It's also, the, the thing with Winterford though is you have to do more than one because there are so many areas that are so different the, the way that they're graded and what they're going out to. I mean, you look at Upper Highlands, Lower Highlands. the point, the hill, Cottage Hill, like, every, the maze, everything is completely different. I mean, even if you just look at when we were going through all the center business stuff, behind East Bus and Savings Bank, this, the flooding that happens there, I mean, that's even completely different than all of the other neighborhoods. But we'd need guidelines that are all, you know. Section.
It's almost becomes like an overlay to our zoning, Aquifer districts, marsh districts, so it's like, you can be a rezay in a marsh district, you are able to build on, and then go two and a half stories, what you said, or you could be, you know, rezay.
Yeah.
That each district would be an overlay. Or that, you know, that's a good point, that, that, you know, before we vote on anything for that, hey.
Yeah, they've been quiet, everybody else kind of showed up, you know, from the department, you know, but like, the questions from Concom, you'd kind of want them to be part of that site plan review, I think they're probably not, in a way, right, there's, there's some.
Have you gotten the site plan review report? That's in my notes, I haven't seen that.
The other day, it was, it was from, um, it was from Alagie.
Alagie, and then there's a fire thing underneath, one page.
Okay, I'll look again, I don't remember seeing that, I mean, I'm on the, also, I'll look again.
Yeah, it was.
The Thursday.
It's, you know, it's not, not super comprehensive, you know, they're just like, three pages, right, or something.
Yeah, well.
That's their site plan review report?
The site plan review is like, on one page.
Literally two, right, so you're sort of like.
Well, it makes you wonder if Concom hasn't been vocal for a reason.
Typically, they would, they would normally weigh in after, you know, so we would say that this is the road.
Yep.
Then it's the footprint of whatever building would impact the work. But just to weigh in, that, under your footprint. Can't weigh in, it's gonna happen down. It just feels like we should have some opinion, guidance from them, if they say the work. The thing is we.
Yeah, that's one thing I was gonna mention, is like, is it now?
Like, it's, we're not subdividing.
But it's still, it's a subdivision, one more subdivision.
I want to see the application, because if it's one, it's like.
It's a single family subdivision.
Said it would be a one, one family subdivision, what are you dividing?
Ten, ten years from now, someone building the back of it.
Right.
Because he's given that.
The lot's fifteen thousand square feet, and the lot will still be fifteen thousand square feet.
That's what I thought when they said subdivision was, it's like the whole tile something, oh, you said it was okay, so now, ten years from now, you have a little frontage where we can put on a single family, in the back, we're not gonna develop that area, so maybe there's another house, because it's now, it's a subdivision.
I'll look into that a little bit, it just seems odd, the very definition of subdivide.
Yes.
Is to divide something, or if you have five hundred, if you have fifteen thousand five hundred thirty-three square feet, and then when you're done subdividing, you have fifteen thousand five hundred thirty-three square feet, what did you divide?
Yeah, I think that, I think basically it's just trying to make, sort of a driveway that, that.
I, I think that's all that would be actually opining on.
I don't know who can, who can. Yeah, who could reach out to zip a letter, I mean, the sooner we can see that, the better, because I think it's worth a legal analysis.
Yep.
We've had several subdivisions come before us, back when.
Yeah, we were like, just.
I feel like we, we were a rubber stamp for those.
We were, well, because we were, it's the letter of the law, did it meet one, two, and three? Except when you're looking at one, two, and three, you have to also, we've learned now, make sure you understand the context of what's coming before you, and you shouldn't be able to pass a subdivision of something that has easement or condition, or, you know, a special permit condition or something.
Unless you've already agreed that.
That's the hospital.
That law will only be, one single family.
Yeah, and, and what conditions, I guess in K P's, I mean, it's like, what conditions? If we subdivision, we place subdivision, like, you know, we've. River or all that may come.
And, and that rest of it has to stay raw, that kind of thing.
Well, I have a feeling, whatever it is, they're gonna cut down the trees, they're gonna, no, someone didn't want a backyard.
Well, you know what, though, I think is really interesting, I think this is gonna be so difficult on so many different levels, one of which, um, the gentleman that stood up several times, the end, the last thing he said was, you know, what if lightning strikes the trees, and then you can't get in? If lightning strikes the tree now, you're in a worse situation, now you can't get in at all, like, at least if they put the one family, now you have a path to get in, you know, that's all I kept thinking when he was saying that, like, well, lightning could strike whether you build a one family or you don't, right? I mean, are we actually improving the area by putting in the one fam, you know, there's just, this is a complicated.
To me, it just, there's a huge process thing that this showed, and I'm kind of proud of us to kind of stand up for the process, that like, you can't send us stuff at midnight on Thursday, and then send us stuff not at midnight, at seven oh five, or whatever it was, five o'clock, I don't know, I didn't get the email, and I had well on my way getting here and getting mentally prepared to answer this.
I, I mean, I still appreciate them sending it when they had it, instead of just coming in, as we've had in the past, and someone walking in, be like, oh, we have something new to show you, here are all the copies, so I do appreciate the honesty and upfrontness of that, but I also agree with you, I'm glad that we follow across the procedural side of it, and, and are having them reset.
Yeah, I want to be sort of, you know, not garbage in, garbage out, like, and feel like, oh my god, we gotta, we gotta respond to this, and dance, go, 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 and puts a lot of pressure.
And it shouldn't just be because this project getting so much vocal, you know, a butter comment, it should be like that with anything, you know, everybody's voice should always be that clear.
Yeah, so I heard a motion from E that we are approving the minute, September twenty-first, October nineteenth, twenty twenty, and May seventeenth of twenty twenty-one. And then I heard Gina approve it. I, 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 make a second. Did that, did I just imagine that just now, did that just happen?
Taking the subjects, proving the minutes of the last.
Sure.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, alright, like, we just did that, alright, good, so, I can, I'll, I'll, I'll make PDFs, like, to you, I guess, did I get them?
I can get it to I T, however, to get them up on the.
There's probably like, two or three more that are in the rears that I need to catch up on, but we, we actually missed meetings, just because there was like much going on and stuff, so we don't think too. Yeah, I think we might have canceled. That's right. Okay, so that's it, so, uh.
I feel like ten years has passed, or no time at all.
Yeah, and that's, they're both can be true.
So I'll file a motion to close the meeting.
Okay. Right. Alright, well, that's it. Next thing is kind of a continuation of the, um, uh, continuation of us talking about the use table, but we're not gonna talk about the use table, we're talking about how we need to call the Calvary in to help us do the use table. And so I think we, we sort of had a few, uh, I need to write a request to, I mean, it'll essentially be to you, I guess, right? And, um, to Rachel, and, and sort of say, hey, uh, we need help to do it, maybe you can help a little, probably not, I don't know, and, uh, but maybe we should get the M A P C to help, because they're also, so, Metropolitan Area Planning. City Council, some, see, I always get it wrong, whatever, it's one of those, and, um, what's good about them is they have an understanding of the whole metropolitan area, and so when we say, oh, two thousand dollars for a parking spot, or should the height be thirty feet, they go, well, all your other competitors or all your other contemporaries, peers, yeah, are doing this, and why are you guys doing that? So it's super helpful for us, and then they come back with like, here's what your zoning says now, and here's a redacted document we're suggesting you do, and it's so much easier than us trying to fight through it on, on the Zoom like we did. Right, it's just not plausible, like, we can react to things, and I think we came pretty prepared, although I must say, like, the.